I call the committee of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we customarily do, we're going to take a moment of reflection. Certainly, I hope that you would keep the family and friends of John McCain, who passed away, was a great American, I hope you'll keep them in your thoughts.
Paul Ross from Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to request, due to the audience we have and being respectful of the audience that we have, I'd like to request that we move the introductions and presentations of our new town employees up to item, I guess, between items two and three now. So, item six, I'm proposing, or I'm making a motion that we move item six to just before item three, our joint public hearing.
On second. Good motion, on second. Any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is Sixo, thank you very much. Under introductions and presentations, Mark, you may want to be the doorman on these folks. Jim Lantone, he's the Public Works Director.
We don't need one at a time, or did you want us all to group?
I got you listed separately.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce one of the newest members of the team, Mr. Chris Sartan. Chris started with us on June 4th of this year as a safety coordinator. A little bit about Chris's background, the attainment at Christiansburg High School. He's a trainer in OSHA 10 and 30 yard certification, a certified trainer from American Health and Safety Institute for first aid, CPR, floodwater pathogens, and AED. He has 20-plus years of safety experience in both private and public sector. Chris has been married for 11 years, has a stepson that's a staff sergeant in the U.S. Marine Corps Station in Paris Island, South Carolina. Chris enjoys trying new places to save, eating at new restaurants, working in the yard, relaxing with family and friends on the porch. He also likes watching more racist and tech football games.
Thank you. Chris, buckle aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Grant Hoover, who is a crew supervisor, storm warder.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to the newest member of our storm warder, Cody Satter. Cody came to us recently, and he has a badge. He graduated in 2012 from the state government. He has background in both automotive and construction, which I think will make him a valuable asset to our team. Playing his crouton, Cody enjoys hunting, fishing, outdoor activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Logan checks if that microphone's on.
I can speak loudly.
Okay, that's fine.
My name's Mike Huesman, I'm the horticulturist, right-of-way supervisor of town Christiansburg. I have two new people with me today, Tim Stuckey, Tim's from South Carolina, where he played football. He also has one daughter. He is actually helping me out on horticulture this year, and we're very happy to have him. Logan's actually from Northern Virginia. He just moved here, and his girlfriend, they just love the mountains and wanted to be here. So, he is actually one of my grassroots. Both of them are excellent people, and we're glad to have them.
Next, we have John Carter, crew supervisor, utilities.
Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce you to two new employees on the utility crew we have. The first gentleman's Cody Caldwell. He attended Floyd County High School. He previously worked for Faulkner Construction. His assignment was building roads, cycle repairs, grading. And all these times when he's not working, he likes hunting, fishing, and working on automobiles. The next one gentleman is Matt Richardson. He attended Christiansburg High School. After he finished high school, he took a course in mechanical college of automotives. And on his days when he's not working, he likes hunting, fishing, riding his motorcycle, and playing with his dogs.
John Schiller, operations supervisor, wastewater treatment facilities.
Hi, I'm John Schiller. I'd like to introduce Jason Calvert. He's the new maintenance supervisor for the wastewater facility. Jason is a lifelong resident of Christiansburg, and he attended New River Community College. And he comes to this organization with over 20 years of maintenance and property management experience. He has a great love for the state and enjoys Appalachian history, culture, traditional woodworking, and fishing. He is an active assistant scoutmaster with the Boy Scouts of America. Seth Dalton is our newest maintenance technician for pump stations. Seth comes to us from, he grew up in Max Meadows, and he's a graduate of Ford Chapel High. He attended Whitfield and New River Community College, taking courses in instrumentation and electrical. He enjoys fishing and hunting. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, guys. We have Max Brown, solid waste supervisor.
How's everybody tonight? This is Brandon Owens, he's our new solid waste driver. He studied history at Bluefield College and is a class A CDO for about 16 years now. In his free time, he enjoys performing magic, which I'm sure amuses his children endlessly. Brandon lives on a farm and enjoys hunting quail with falcons, and we're very glad to have Brandon as a member of our team.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we've got Dave Franz, human resources director. David?
Everyone, thank you. I want to introduce you to our newest human resources generalist, Brianna English. Brianna joined us July 23rd. She was recently married to Nick English, June 30th. She graduated from Radford University in 2013. She enjoys traveling, hiking, spending time with family. She has experience in retail and fundraising and development from Radford University. We're lucky to have her.
Well, I'll get you to come up with a name. We have a young lady who is retiring Friday from the town of Christiansburg, Sherry Hunter. 30 years on the job, and I swear she doesn't look like she's lived about 30 years, but anyway. Whereas Sherry Hunter began working for the town of Christiansburg on August 1st, 1988, and whereas Sherry is leaving employment at the town of Christiansburg as office manager for the finance department on August 31st, 2018. And whereas Sherry Hunter demonstrated the great knowledge of the finance department and her workings during her time with the town of Christiansburg, has served a variety of roles, from cashier to tax billing specials to accounts payable. And whereas Sherry's leadership, integrity, vision, intelligence, loyalty, strong work ethic, and commitment to excellent public service are deeply appreciated by the town staff and the town council. And whereas Sherry Hunter always went above and beyond her official job to serve the town of Christiansburg, whereas the town staff and town council wish Sherry Hunter success in her new endeavors and retire. Now therefore, we resolve the Christiansburg Town Council meeting in regular session on August the 14th, 2018, formally recognizes and commands Sherry Hunter for her 30-plus years of service to the town of Christiansburg. Sherry, have you been here since I've been coming down here? And I just want to tell you how much we appreciate everything that you have done for us. Enjoy.
Thank you. Thank you, dear. I just wanted to say, when I came here nine years ago, we, the treasurer left, and the deputy treasurer left, and I walked through the door from Northern Michigan and had to immediately sort of reorganize the department and get going and figure out everything that was going on. This was my go-to girl. She stepped up to the plate at every turn. She helped me resolve all kinds of problems, figure out what staff was capable of doing what, and was always there to try and take on more work, to make my job less stressful, and to just be the best employee that I think I've ever had. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to add that Sherry Hunter Lane retired a year ago, year and a half ago, from the Aquatic Center. He was the head maintenance guy at the Aquatic Center from the day we broke ground. So, y'all had a good long service to Christiansburg, and thank you, both.
Good stuff.
Traps, do you have somebody back there? Okay, I think I missed you on the list. We have a joint public hearing with the planning commission. Ordinance to amend Chapter 42 zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to boarding houses, hotels, motels, and tourist homes. And whoever do you want to explain a little bit about this?
Of course. Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and the planning commission. This comes to you all with a positive recommendation from the Development Subcommittee that has met twice on the potential current change, requiring a conditional use permit for a boarding house for one to four people in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning districts over all of our commercial zoning districts here in town. And also, the changes that are proposed would take out a definition of tourist home, which was not clear, you know, how that would be applied, and if there were no longer any tourist homes in the town, which is the integrated definition, that we wanted to clear up the code and take that out. We've also clarified the definitions to make sure that they line up. The definition would be boarding house and hotel, since boarding house really does function as a small hotel of up to 14 people, and then hotel kind of picks up after that point. And so, currently, a conditional use permit is required for a boarding house in the B1, B2, and B3 districts. And this would require for a conditional use permit for one to four people instead of just the five to 14 people. Now, I did want to clarify to you, in the B1 district, the recommendation from the Development Subcommittee was to take out a boarding house because of bed and breakfast is not permitted in a boarding house, neither is a hotel. So, really, those similar uses are not currently provided for in the B1 district. So, that is the proposal that is before you this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any at this time.
Stay close. All right. All the ordinance to evide the zoning, anyone here to address this issue? Anyone who opposed the issue?
What comments?
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for having us again, Council. Jared Marie March, 2198 Soursburg, Floyd. Owners of Big Bear Property and the current developers of the Green Acres Motel renovation, the boarding house that spurred all of this. Thank you. First, we've encountered a lot of hostility from the community about this. We've also been embraced by a lot of the community about this. And I kind of wanted to draw some parallels here between council and church. I believe a council is here to take care of its citizens. A church is here to take care of its flock. The council doesn't need to worry about successful people, they need to worry about insignificant people, as was one of the comments that was made in a council meeting a couple of weeks ago. Some of the people that complained were significant, so they had to take this up further. That was extremely offensive, because it implied the insignificance of the people such as ourselves, such as some of the Thunder, and everyone's backing us in this community. The arrogance is intolerable from this group. We're not going to put up with it. Anyway, church and council both have a role to take care of the least in their community, because the successful people can handle themselves. The successful people in this community, if they wanted a piece of property, because they didn't want it, you know, developed into something that they didn't care for, they had opportunities to buy it. And that's going to be the case probably everywhere when there's a situation like this. If someone moves into a property, they can do with it what they like. That's their property rights, as long as it's within code and within, you know, their abilities. So, Christiansburg, the method they've used to take care of the least in the community is to hand them a bus ticket to Roanoke, and this is confirmed. Is that an appropriate way to take care of the least in our community? If this community is going to be self-sufficient, it needs to take care of its own. If a church is going to be significant, it needs to take care of its own. And what we're seeing in this community is a church that doesn't want to take care of its own, attacking people who do want to take care of their own. It's repulsive. This seems a lot like the Starlight situation from a couple of years ago. We've got a couple of people complaining about something they have no right to complain about, and a council that's now acting to move against the people doing the development, the people that are taking care of the least in this community, the people that are putting private money, private investment into this, and this is not a moneymaker despite every lie that's being spread in the community. This is money that the town does not need to spend. They don't need to seek a grant, which they're so fond of, which further promote non-sustainability in this community. We're actually doing something significant. So, I'd appreciate if you noted that we're doing something significant. So, I think what it boils down to is, is we're not expecting a thank you, because we know we're not going to get that. We don't want that, we're not seeking that, that's not what we're here for. We are here to do what we feel like we need to do, what we feel like we're called to do, and what our supporters and the people we're working with feel like they're called to do. And if this is going to happen, it's going to happen. If it's going to happen on our property, it's going to happen. If it's going to happen on another property, it's going to happen. Putting roadblocks up to make this not happen is ridiculous. I think you've got a choice here, and, you know, I'm not picking sides. I like people from all denominations, all races, everywhere. Christiansburg needs to choose if this is going to be Christiansburg or un-Christiansburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak?
I'm Lenny Hall with Sons of Thunder Ministry. We'll be the ones that are coordinating this housing project and coffee shop and the businesses that will be going in the places. For me, this has been a hard issue from the first time we had this meeting, because from personal experience in ministry and council, the only difference between the ones seeking a second chance and the ones opposing is the ones seeking a second chance have been caught. So, for us to move forward, this is an opportunity for young men, young women, to come back, to have a place to come back to. You know how I keep up with my graduating class? The crime times. So, what are we doing to change that? What are we doing to make a difference? The system is not working, the system is failed. You look at the boarding houses that are currently in operation in Christiansburg, they failed. Who is going to take the charge? Who's going to stand in the gap and make up the hedge, is what scripture says? Because they deserve a community to stand behind them. And anything less, now listen, I get to stand on the authority of the church, so I have a little different platform. But if you come up here, anyone in this meeting that comes up here and professes Christ, but hates those less than, the scripture calls you a hypocrite. And if I don't change, if I don't be part of the change, then I'm a hypocrite as well. I've chosen my side, it's to make a change. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let me ask, ask a quick question. Sir, you're going to be a full-time supervisor at this location, and you mentioned coffee shop. Is that your role?
Yes, sir.
Okay, full-time?
Yes, sir. And if any one has any questions, wants to know how the program is going to operate or how it's going to function, I would be honored to sit down with anyone and go over it. But once again, the people here are operating on hearsay. I have yet to receive the first phone call for information of what's going on there. So, the opportunity and the invitation is open, and I encourage it.
And you're going to live there, or where do you live?
I currently reside in Floyd County. There's going to, laugh it up, chuckles.
Be quiet.
What we're going to do is, we're going to have an operational business that functions during business hours on the property. So, there's going to be comings and goings. We want to also serve the community, not just on this capacity, but feed them as well. Feed the community, not just the people going through the program. So, that's going to attract traffic, number one, but that's going to keep people to and from and off all the time. And as we institute this program, whoever it is that we're working with is going to be in, it's not going to be supervised all the time, because it's just not. Because how do you, these people are coming out of incarceration.
They're free.
Right? They're coming out, they have gone through, they've served their time, and they're coming out clean. And what they don't have is a place to go, is a place to be rehabilitated into the system. They get dropped off here at town hall at midnight, and what happens then? Where do they go? They go right back into the same old, same old. They hang out with the same people, they run to the same places, and something's got, somebody has to stand in the gap. Where are they going to go? And it's not, it's not going to take another boarding pass on a bus back to Roanoke or another trip to jail. We've got to make a difference.
And this is not a rehab facility.
That's correct.
This is housing for people that need housing. Right now, these people, as they come out of jail, they're being housed by the county at county expense at the Sun Inn.
Or living on the street.
They're living on the street if they don't have housing at the Sun Inn.
We've been finding them housing for the last 12 years at Do South Barbecue, with partnerships with Bill Kraft and his mobile home. We've been doing this service for you guys for 12 years. These people are already here. We're just here to try to help them be able to function and to be able to, you know, find a work, find a family, love, have somebody that loves and cares for them. That's the heart that we have. We don't have a heart to put in fear at anyone. We don't have a heart to hurt anyone. We have a heart for these people.
Are these first-time offenders?
Doesn't matter. I'm sorry, the questions will come from council. You'll have your chance to talk later if you'd like. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. So, that's our, that's our passion, that's our heart. Our heart is to help these people. You know, the enemy instills fear. Everybody battles it. But the Lord instills peace, and peace is what we need to strive on. Peace is what we need to make us go through our day, not fear. There's tons of people in this world that is led by fear. Are we led by fear, or are we led by peace? I've had drug addicts in my house. I've had people from Eagle's Nest, we've had over 30 drug addicts, that ex-drug addicts out of prison, just like the same program that we're wanting to do. They come to my house, and they've slept on my couch. Just because of their past, they don't deserve to not be loved. They don't deserve to not have somebody to take care of them. They don't, just because they've made mistakes, doesn't mean that they don't deserve love, that they don't deserve somebody to show them Christ. And it hurts me to see people and their hatred. It hurts me to see how people don't care for other people. And I'm sorry for crying, but I'm very passionate about this. It bothers me to know that there's so many people out there, they claim to be Christians, they claim to have a heart to help others, but the minute that it comes in their neighborhood, they don't want anything to do with it. I would have them at my house, I would have them behind my house, I would have them living with me if I could, but that is not where the Lord's told us to put it. The Lord has told us to put it here, and we are following exactly what Christ has told us to do. So, I want to ask y'all, who leads you? What leads you to your decisions? Are you led by fear, or are you led by peace?
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, thank you.
For my own safety, I'd rather not give my address. If you want it, I'll give it to you later.
Okay.
I'm Marie, and I live in Christiansburg.
We gave our address. I think that's a request to the council. I'd like to have a name and address.
Marie, and I live off of 460. I got a, the last time I spoke here, I got a call that night from an inmate from the Salem Jail. So, I'd rather, I'll give you the address after this meeting.
Thank you.
Can I clarify, where's the address of this area that we're speaking of?
We're beyond that, aren't we not? 3200 Block of Roanoke Street, 31, several addresses.
You were talking about helping these people at Floyd, so that raised this question. I am Christian, and I do have a compassionate heart for those in need, but my belief is, if you clump them all together in one location, you just said that you wanted to incorporate these people into a normal society, to get them back on track, to give them opportunities. My personal belief is, if you clump them all together in one location, the temptation to stray back to their old ways, that they're trying to rehab from, is so great, and you're locating it so close to an interstate, where that sort of problem loves interstates and highways to traffic. The temptation, I believe, is going to be so immense to go back to the old ways. If you want to incorporate them into society, and you do need a place, you do need a community and a place to turn to, but not to each other where you've all experienced a similar problem. You need people with a normal path and a Christian path, and keep them on track, and still have your facility in Floyd, or the Floyd people come to them at a designated location during business hours. But to clump them all together, to live... But to clump them all together, to live together, I think is the wrong decision.
Could I clarify? I'm not... Could I provide additional detail for your benefit?
And also, if they're coming from the Salem Jail, why doesn't Salem provide accommodations? I don't know.
You know, you got us up here too, ma'am, I don't know.
Right. But we've all... Most of us in that community have been long-term residents, of 20, 30 years. We've had an established family, a community there. Our property values will just go down. And we don't have the means to just pick up and move, like you pick a suitcase up and go on vacation somewhere. But I think it's wrong to clump them all together, and to rezone this housing, I believe you stated in the beginning of the meeting, to make it accommodate more than 14 people. I just think it's a huge mistake. One in a location, and half a mile somewhere else down the road, place another one, they do need a place to go. But if you don't clump bad, all together in one clump, you integrate them within society, so they can lean on those that don't have that, or did not have that dependency, they can lean on those that don't have a history of dependency, or drug trafficking, whatever the charges were. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I clarify the number of people that will be living there for you guys?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have four, four people at one time, in a transition, which will be people that are graduating the program, that are moving back into their own residence, their own family residence, and the fifth will be for them waiting for a room. So, clumping four people together, I'm not sure what kind of damage we're looking at here, but...
And they're individual apartments, it's not one...
Yeah. Yeah.
It will be four at a time.
Thank you.
At its peak, the facility, when Jerry Vaught was running it, housed 31 people. We're gonna propose four.
Very good. Okay. Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Karen Phillips, over at 3190 Roanoke Street. I really get the impression, I feel like this is being turned into, whether you're a Christian or not, I refuse to let that be what this is about. I know that I'm a Christian, that I'm saved, and, you know, God, we're all children of God, and, you know, that is not what this started to be about. That is not. You know, no one is saying that these folks don't deserve a second chance, or a place to go. But let me ask you this, the ones who are for this, how many? Show of hands, if you don't mind. Will you allow that I ask this?
Depends on your question.
Have worked, directly, one-on-one, with a recovering addict or alcoholic? In capacities, like you live in your house. We still was...
I think your question was answered by show of hands, thank you.
Okay. So, then you're aware of the fact that the statistics are very low in recovery. I know, I work with recovering alcoholics and addicts, I know this. I'm not saying they don't deserve a second chance, I believe that, you know, we all do. But, what is burning me up is to think that you can show people to God, and that's gonna cleanse them and make everything better. Because I attend a recovery meeting on a regular basis, three, four times a week. There are people that have tried church, they have tried this meeting, it would be a perfect world if we could all say, okay, so we're gonna show them to the church, and that's gonna fix it. I do not believe it, I've seen different, and I know better. And nothing is gonna change my mind. I've been around plenty enough to know. And I'll tell you something else, and this may be out of line, but this lady over here that's all involved in this, I just, I feel that they just have no respect for you guys, and it really burns me up. It really does. Boot 'em out, the article said, boot 'em out.
Boot 'em out.
Thank you.
All of them out, get 'em out.
All right. We got a conversation between you and this council, and that's all the conversation we have at this point.
Well, it's hard, it's hard for me.
I understand, I understand.
Because, we too have a right to the homes that we live in, the money that we spend. We didn't have the opportunity to buy that property, we don't have the money to buy that property. Just because somebody else has the money to buy it, and do something else with it, doesn't mean it's gonna be successful. Doesn't mean that we're not gonna be looking across the street, seeing the same things that we saw before. People in and out of windows, coming and going on who knows what kinds of drugs, the police being called left and right. It's not fair to the people who have lived there for a very long time, and spent their hard-earned money, you know, for their home, and chose where they wanted to live. And all of a sudden, this has gotten, it's gotten really hostile, and, I'm telling you, the recovery meeting that I take into a jail, they have church meetings that go in, recovery meetings, Alpha programs that go into the prisoners, they have a choice, they have a choice, when they're there to make a decision. Do they want a better life, a different life? We encourage them to have a plan, a safety net plan, before they leave the jail. We offer and extend our hand to them, but you know what? Some of these folks don't really want it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Mary Martin, I live at 2850 Roanoke Street. I would like to say a couple things about this. I don't know how so many people got to Christianity and churches involved in this, when no church that I know of is involved in this. All these people right here, that I'd like for them to stand, if they're in support of your voting this new, and I'd ask them to stand us, and we'll save you some time in talking. But, I'm gonna ask you this. If this was beside, within 75 feet of either one of your houses, would you be in favor for it, or would you not? There is nothing wrong with the amendment that we're asking you to vote upon. It's just simply saying, if you want a boarding house, you have to come before this council and get it approved. That's all it amounts to. And we really respect your opinions on this, and we really truly hope that you vote this in, you know. It's just, I have a business myself, it's in the business of it, but I still have to come and give a conditional use permit to operate out of it. There's nothing wrong with that. And I do ask you, seriously people, to pass this amendment with this zoning ordinance. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Any other subject? We have the general ideas. Larry, Johnny, you in on this deal?
I am. Thank you, my name is Johnny Martin, I live at 3295 Roanoke Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. Just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come to the town council and plan and commission. I just wanna say a few things. I wanna thank you for your time, that I know that this has, I know this has been a tough decision, I know that there's been subcommittees, and a lot of planning, a lot of effort that has went forward to make this decision. I have full confidence in every one of you guys that are on that committee. I believe that you will put this town first, and its citizens. So I come saying, thank you for your work ethics, thank you for all that you do for this town. I do have confidence in each one of you members, you were elected people by this community, and that means a lot. I trust that you will make the decision that needs to be made, and to move this town forward, and to change this ordinance that is outdated by a long time ago. So, I simply ask for your vote, as my brother has asked, that you would amend this ordinance, and that you would put the town, its citizens, this neighborhood, and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask a gentleman a question again here, and you just said that there's gonna be four apartments, okay? And there'll be, if that should come about, I can sort of see that in each, and you're saying there's gonna be one person in each apartment, but I can see three or four people in each apartment.
So you're speculating, I'm not gonna let you do that.
My question is, my real question is, is there going to be someone who is going to check on these people on maybe a weekly basis, or a daily basis? When you said you live in Floyd, that sort of put me off. Can you elaborate on that?
So, the people that we'll be dealing with mainly will be the drug court system. I don't know if you all are familiar with that program or not. What it is, is it operates with people who are ready to make a change in prison, right? So they will be coming to us in these houses with the intent of working towards a goal of having their record expunged, to get a fresh start, a clean slate, to be able to get a job, to be able to work. And what these transition houses provide for them is low cost, so that they can save, so that they can go to the program, so that they can meet the requirements that drug court puts in place for them to be successful in the program. So it's gonna be, it's court-regulated way before it even gets to us.
It's court-regulated and enforced by local law enforcement.
There's curfew checks.
Curfews are enforced, occupancies enforced. This program's already in existence, we're not inventing it.
All right, thank you. Anything else to come before this planning, commission meeting, joint meeting? I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I'd like to speak, if I could, sir.
You're doing...
I'd like to ask some questions to you, if I could, sir.
You've addressed the council, and you come up here and gives you a name and address.
Good evening, council member, each resident, and each supporter and proponent. Tonight, I thank each one of you for being here, participating in the local issues that affect each one of us who are residents of the town of Christiansburg.
I need your name and address, sir, I'm sorry.
Marvin Nunley, 15 Howery Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. My home is a little further down the road from where the 2200 block is, at the first halfway house.
Boarding house.
Yes, sir. When we met the first time up here, was with the zoning commission, if I understood right, and at that time, some issues were brought up about paving and drainage issues. So have those issues been solved, or we have progressed to where we're actually looking at giving permits for a boarding house today?
Andrew, sit. Do we have site planned in place for the floor that they're doing right now?
We have.
And the paving is addressed, and the markings and all that stuff?
Correct. So is a conditional permit issued for that?
The building permit, is that correct, Andrew? You have to explain that.
Yes, it's building permit, because I understand it's good that you can have a boarding house up to one of the four people without a conditional use permit. So a building permit has been issued, based on that meeting, all of the building code provisions, as well as the zoning ordinance requirement.
All right, thank you, I'm in. When, I've heard different people speak, and this one brought up, and I'm actually pretty skeptical of it, so I also am a Christian, and I think most of us would identify this room as Christians. I think most of us, as I spoke at the second meeting, we all wanna do something and do something right, to help people who are coming out of jail. But, the comment was made that, you know, many of the people in this room were probably people that had done stuff that, you know, that just hadn't been called. I take issue with that, I don't think that's to be the case. There are people who make bad decisions, bad choices, and they go to jail, and they pay for those choices. And I think the fact of the drug issues, not only in the town of Christiansburg, but throughout the country, with all the stuff you hear from opioid abuse today, which is in the news, it affects some of us somehow, every one of us, through friends, family, coworkers. So we know there's a problem with abusive drugs and alcohol. And that concerns me. It concerns me as a citizen, it concerns me as a Christian. The other thing that would concern me is, some of the people here coming out of jail to be released into room and boardhouses, could possibly be pedophiles. My grandkids live on this facility, with me at different times, as many of these other residents have kids and grandkids, and oftentimes, these people prey upon the very weak, the very young, and the very old. Ms. Martin gave a very blazing testimony at some of the things that happened at a halfway house before, with her home. And that's true.
Boarding house.
The boarding house.
Yes, sir.
Above, beside her home. Yes, sir. I think one of the primary issues for government, local government also, is the safety of citizens within the government that you guys, I mean, within the confines of the community of the town of Christiansburg that you guys represent. I'm all for helping. I am all for finding a way to put resources, to help people coming out of jail. But I'm not sure that we have put forth the best rules, the best plan, as of tonight, to proceed as of today. And unless somebody can convince me otherwise on that, I'm gonna stick to that statement I just made. At Faith and Missionary Baptist Church, I served as a Deacon for 18 years. We helped a lot of people coming through the church, asking for money, asking for help. And one gentleman in particular, we lived on the grounds up there for over a year. And at the end of that year, with all the help that he had been given, and all the money that he had been giving, he walked away, never changed his life, and as far as I know, he's still living the life that he lived before he came on day one. Two things that concern me as a citizen, there are no sidewalks up and down that road, there's very poor lighting up and down that road. There's very, from my experience working with those in need, it's hard to find the money to fund the needs that these people coming out of jail have. Who's gonna pay for their health issues? Who's gonna provide them transportation to and for, when they do need to go to the hospital, or a job interview, or to go get groceries? Where is this money coming from? I just, I don't think we have brainstormed enough as a community, and in no way am I going to blackball with the marchers. I know they're good people, I know they're hard, I believe they're sincere in their way. But I think we, as a community as a whole, may be in conjunction with notifying several local churches within the town of Christiansburg, to see if those local churches could possibly help fund a halfway house, or boarding house, whatever's called, to do the best job at that, so that something doesn't begin, and then it fails in the middle of the process. And this dear man right here said that he would be, if I understood right, providing some in-house supervision. But, I think from what I understood, it would be on a part-time basis. Do we really need a part-time supervisor, if this thing proceeds, or do we need a full-time supervisor? And it's based on the testimony from the two previous meetings, that the town police were there as many times as was suggested, if indeed that's true, does the town of Christiansburg have the resources to commit to the trips down there that was reported in the first two meetings, when the boarding house was out previously? And based on my own experience, the deli mart is about a mile from the facility at 2200 Block of Roanoke Street. 2200 Lock of Runge Street. In the previous sentence of that facility, when it was operating, because they didn't have transportation, the stores tend to close about nine o'clock, these people tend to congregate down there from 10 o'clock until we are in the morning. And only God knows what they were doing there after hours, but at different times, I would see money go into a window and a bag come out of it. So you can use consent and kind of know what was happening there. Is there going to be a process in place for these former inmates of the jail, as they come into a boarding house, that they'll be screened weekly or monthly to see if they are staying clean, if they are falling back into that old life of taking drugs and alcohol? And if we're going to, if that's possible, if that's a requirement, if it's a need, who's going to provide those kits, or who's going to implement those, those could be built-in safety features to make sure that people are hearing to the guidelines that the people wanting to run the boarding house would maybe implement in that program? I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions. I think there is a need, there's a definite need. But like the one person spoken long ago, none of us wants that side of the house. Is it the best location? It's the location presently that seems to be the only location, but could there be a better location? And the last thing that I want to see us do as residents of the town of Christiansburg is to be rude at one another, to be suspicious of one another, to be doubtful of one another, and become enemies of others. I sure don't want that. These folks are not my enemy. If they have faith in Jesus Christ, they're my brother and they are my sister.
That's right.
But I also understand the concerns most, most, most annately voiced by Ms. Martin in being afraid of it in her own yard, because of the incidents that had proceeded in a horrible beginning. So oftentimes, the best indicator of future history is past history, and I understand her set to see. So you guys have had a lot thrown at you, Mike, in the last two meetings, and I know you all be intelligent men, I know you all be caring men, and I, along with every other person in this room, am expecting you to make good decisions, based on the information that you've gleaned from both factions in the room. In closing, I thank each one of you for your service. I thank you for my time here at the podium, letting me voice my concerns. Maybe the one thing that all of us could do that we haven't any thought to do yet, is maybe, maybe before we start throwing rocks at each other, we could seek the Lord's wisdom in prayer, and see how the Lord directs all this. Because if He wants the house to be built, it will be built. If He doesn't want it to be built, it won't be built.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for my time.
Not in response to anything that he said, he mentioned.
Name and address, please.
Me?
Yes, if you're the.
I was going to make a comment, but that's what you're doing.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment to his, I'm not going to respond to his questions, I'll be glad to sit down with you.
I think that's probably what needs a lot of.
Absolutely.
That offer has been made. But the churches surrounding that property that are in support of them, is all of them
but one church. So if that clarifies.
They've all reached out except that church. What's that?
I don't know. I'm not going to get into that church, but I'm just, you know. Okay. Are you going to make a statement? I need your name and address.
Paul Duffin, 315 Pine Alley Road. I really, I apologize, I really don't know all the history and everything here. But I do know, I personally feel that this is a tried and true program, from what I understand. These people are coming out, you know, we've had a few people talk about needing the constant supervision, they've already had constant supervision. This is a transition to get from that to out here in society. And if we don't have a program like this, then they come out without supervision, with no means. And as I understand also, the people that are doing this are the people that made a commitment in prison, that they were wanting to change their life, they were wanting resources. So it seems to me, and I said, I don't know a lot of history, I respect everybody's opinion here, but it seems to me that if we're going to invest the resources for poor people that had a talent to come through, if we're going to invest the resources, we should be doing it in the people that are requesting the resources, that are trying to do it, to have some level of supervision, whatever that is, which is more than they'll have otherwise. And I said, I'll be brief, and it's.
Thank you. Appreciate it. John?
My name's John Lee, I live at 3135 Ronoc Street. My property joins this property, my house is about 100 yards from this property. Like I've spoken before in previous meetings, I'm not against these programs, everybody needs a second chance. I'm all for that, just not at this location. Mayor, council people, council members, I witnessed the way it was run last time. I took care of my parents, and I sat there and watched it. And I had to endure their whole life. I seen how it was operated, I seen the cops go in and out, I seen people come up a private driveway, the driveway that I live on, pull in my field, and go in the back door. Now, I'm naive, but I usually don't carry all business through the back door. I confronted a gentleman one time, never seen him again. I ask you to just make a wise decision, support the resigning. Again, I agree, these facilities need to be made, not at this location. One thing that hasn't been brought up, there used to be a gas station there too. No one's mentioned about any type of environmental conditions. Well, gas stations usually have gas tanks. They're painting these facilities, asbestos. I don't know that that's even been addressed.
It has been addressed, John.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your concern, I don't want your job. You had a lot thrown at you, and I really, I appreciate you listening, and I just, I want you to consider the status of the residents here at Christiansburg. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am?
Melanie Guzler, 679 Smith Creek Road, Christiansburg. I'm a devoted part of Sons of Thunder Industries, and one thing I want to mention to begin with, there's a lot of talk about other locations. But where are the other locations right now that are presenting themselves? Who has been willing to invest, put time, emotion, hard work, elbow grease, money, whatever it takes for these facilities? I personally don't know of anyone else right now. God's Word says that we're to give someone, or give to someone, regardless of knowing what's going to happen, whether we give money, and we don't know where that money's going to go, we don't know what they're going to use it for. Our heart is to give, and to love, and to share. We're not here to judge success rates, failure rates. We're going to base the future on what's happened in the past, always. It's not fair to condemn a program or anything before we see what it is. Andrew, you may or not have some statistics on property values, property values were mentioned a lot, but I don't know what kind of property value there is with condemned buildings next to your property versus viable business. So in a, you know, technical financial sense, that would also be something to consider, even if it's not just a mere consideration of your heart. Whether these citizens are very temporary or permanent of Christiansburg, they are our citizens. Whether they're dropped off here by bus, or they've been here for 50 years, or families have been here 100 years, they still are our citizens to care for and to love. So I just ask you to make a decision with your heart in this matter. Thank you, appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Patricia, and I live 325 Ronoc Street. And that property is very close to where we live, and personally, I do not want to be looking over my shoulder, or closing the curtains of my house, or at night hearing steps in my deck. I'm going to be worried, I'm going to, I don't want to change my lifestyle right now. I don't want to live scared that someone is going to come and get in my house and do something to me. I, like John Lee said, I believe also in second chances. I believe that people deserve second chances. Also, I'm very realistic to look at the statistics of that one that got away. Are you going to be responsible? Who's going to be responsible for that person that got away? That either raped somebody, or killed somebody, or robbed somebody? I just want to know who is going to step up and do something about that. Well, you can do something about it right now. We can find a place for this facility to go somewhere else. I don't know how many over here would like that property to be in your backyard. I don't know how many of you want to lock your doors at night and look out the window, close the curtains, because somebody might be looking out from the yard. All I'm saying is, I don't want to, I live there, we own a house there, I don't want to live scared. There's already a lot of police coming and going as it is, and nothing has started yet. Those properties over there are always, there's always problems with those properties. Please consider that, consider who lives there, who lives there. If anybody wants that, they can have it in their backyard, that's fine with us, it's fine. You want a new backyard, you have a Christian heart, we all, it's not on the question about being Christian or not, it's not about that. It's about us having that next to us and feeling safe, just for that one that got away, that person that didn't get rehabilitated, that one person, as you know, you know about cases. So think about that before you make your decision, please. Think about, as much as the church is here to help, to help everybody, to have a good heart towards everybody, you do not own everybody's hearts. You cannot touch every single heart and guarantee that that person is not going to come and do something to us. There's no guarantees. No amount of rehabilitation or church is going to change somebody who's got a crooked mind, that one person. Just think about that, that's all I want you to think about before you make your decision.
Thank you. If there's nothing that we haven't already heard, yeah, but I mean, we can, we can hear both sides back and forth, and I'm against your fault, but I mean, unless there's something that has not been brought up tonight. Yes, ma'am, under those rules as much as possible.
Thank you, Martin, I live at 3265 Ronoc Street. This property joins the property that we were discussing tonight. I'm the most affected one by this. And I have already expressed my desire of not having to live by this. I won't let it ruin my life if it don't, but I'll just, I have a nine-foot fence on half of my yard, I'll build it all the way on the yard. But I do, I express my desire, but it's just not the place for this. I mean, these people are already harassing us. One of the workers came by, as my son was weed-eating my house, and he went down the road, and he turned around and he come back, and he said, "You're a weed eater, threw grass or rocks in my window." I mean, now who does that? This is the kind of people we're dealing with. I just want to express my desire that I do wish that we have this son, and I wish that these people could find a place, that they could build their place. They all live in Florida, why don't they go there and build it?
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is John Knowlton, I live at 3225 Ronoc Street. My wife and I came here 20 years ago while I was doing graduate work at Virginia Tech. For 24 years, I lived in Mexico and worked in Christian missions. And after a trip to Spain in 1983, we were received, a gentleman I was with had a certain diplomatic aura, and we were received by the US ambassador in his home in Madrid, and he gave us the rundown of what Spain was like. This is post-Franco. And at this time, he mentioned that the night that Franco died, 200 porno films hit Madrid. Morality had been legislated down through the system, the authoritarian system under Franco. And the youth at that point kind of went crazy. Today, anthropologists call that the lost generation of Spanish youth. We have something similar going on in our country today, of course, with the opioid crisis. After that trip and visiting some of my colleagues that were working already in rehab programs in different parts of Spain, and I saw firsthand the young people, 13, 14, 15 years old, already addicted. And what does a 13, or 14, 15-year-old kid do to support his habit? You sell the only thing you have, which is your body. And that coincided with the AIDS epidemic. So what I was doing in Mexico, we had a two-year training institute at that time, and we began to train Mexican youth to go and help the Spanish youth at that time. They were preparing for over a period of two years, and they went and they assimilated into, they became experts in working with drug addiction, with people with this problem. And many of these that I had worked with very personally before they went to Spain, and then also visited them and followed, and as the rehab programs sprang up all over Spain at that time. The programs, by and large, were much more productive than were the official government programs at the time. It was using the Christian message, but one of the key elements that they were using was what is called shadowing, and many of you know what that is. And what we found out very quickly was, the youth, again, those working on site, was that you can. that you cannot leave an addict alone, not even to go to the bathroom, you have to be right there installed with him. The problem with addiction, those, many of us have not had that experience, so we don't understand, there's a deteriorating somehow in the soul of man. We just buried a nephew in my family who had the very best in rehab, no expenses were spared, could get all the help he had, but he died young. Never could get free of his addictions. But the key was that shadowing, day and night, day and night, you can't leave these folks alone, because the addiction factor is so great. And so I just, I don't know what this model is, I'm sure you're doing great work, but it sounds like the kind of supervision you're having at this level is going to fall far short of what you need to have, the kind of results you want to give the community the confidence it needs to feel safe at night, and you to feel successful at the job here as a town. I'm working actually in Lexington now, BMI, but we still choose to live here because we like this area so much. And hopefully we continue to do that and help the folks that need the help and that are getting up, I'm sure, in all the churches, and through programs that will meet the standards that are, that will give the kind of results that you want to see in your community. And hopefully, that we won't have to talk about a whole generation of American kids who are adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Knowleson, you say your address was?
3225.
3225?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Barbara Martin, 2850 Roanoke Street. And what I want, what I want to try to portray to you is, I think there is one church in particular in this community that has been vilified as this church is trying to stop us from doing this, or this church wants you to change this ordinance. And I don't think that's true. Just, there are some of us that live in the community, and just because of our close approximation, we may go to that church. But I would like, if you may, the people that would like to have you change this ordinance to what is before you, I would like for the people that has nothing to do with the church, that has kind of been accused of being against this, and we had some hands a while ago of some people, could we acknowledge that it's the citizens? It's the people that live in this neighborhood. That church is not trying to keep you from doing anything. It has nothing to do with the church. We are residents, citizens of the town of Christiansburg. And, you know, if we could, the people that are residents, that have nothing to do with the church that they have talked about, if they could please raise their hands or stand and just acknowledge, we would like for you to pass this change in this ordinance, because we are residents of the town of Christiansburg. We live in that neighborhood, we have nothing to do with the church that has been portrayed as having come forth against this.
Thank you.
Can we do that?
I guess we just did.
I mean, Mr. Nunnely himself spoke, you know, he has nothing to do with the church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I will close the public hearing. Planning Commission is here with us, you have heard their concerns and issues. Now you all will meet in, within the next two weeks to give us a recommendation. The council will not vote on this tonight, we'll vote on it on, I believe, September, September the 11th?
Yes.
Yeah, September the 11th is when the final vote will be cast. Andrew, I think, I need to understand that the four units that they have, that they are in the process of developing, or by right they can do, and they have done the four that you had the building permit for, is that correct?
They have issued a building permit, and they continue to work and to establish the boarding house under the current ordinance.
Of four?
Of up to four.
Thank you. That's all I need to know. We're going to take about a three or four-minute break, give the Planning Commission, I don't know whether you want to stay here, you're done as far as we're concerned?
No.
They're all over this. All right, so we're going to take a two, three-minute, four-minute break to clear the room, if anybody wants to leave. But we are not voting on that until tonight. We have approval of Councilmen's August 14, 2018, monthly bills. We need to schedule a public hearing on October the 9th, 2018, for conditional use permit request by the Christiansburg Presbyterian Church for an electronic messaging sign located at 107 West Main Street. Tax map number is 5268-203-206 in the V2 Central Business District. And counsel to set the personal property tax relief percentage at 37.14%, as required by the Personal Property Tax Act relief. Counsel is required to set the personal property tax relief percentage on an annual basis. I think this is a little less than, just a short bit less than what we set it at last year?
I think that's the case.
Yeah.
37.64, and now we're 37.17 something, give or take.
Less than a full percentage, it was 0.7.
Very good.
That's the Jim Gilmore law, right?
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stipes?
Aye.
600, thank you very much. Citizens comments, this is a section that we set aside if citizens would like to make a comment, a comment. If you would address the, if you go to the microphone, name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone here to address counsel? Hearing none. Close to citizens' comments. Done introductions and presentations. Committee reports. Marissa, you got something? No, this is internal, maybe, sir. Go ahead, listen. Marissa, you got something?
I do. I do. We had an absolutely amazing central business committee meeting, and we have a lot in the works, and I'll just go over a few of the highlights. We've approved our first mural on the Christiansburg Police Department building, so that is exciting, because I'm hoping that's the first of many. We are looking at a new love sign to put downtown, and we talked about opportunity zones and how it will benefit the community. Our next meeting is the 5th, and then after that it'll be the 12th. So anybody interested, I just highlighted this, but please attend, or reach out to me, and I'm happy to share the info with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
From counsel?
No, this is the established committees.
Counsel, anything about regional, or you want me to?
You can do it at either point, either under this committee report or counsel report too. Want to go now?
No, we can leave.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, discussion in action by mayor and counsel. We have a request from Christiansburg High School PTSA for street closure for the Homecoming Parade to be held Wednesday, September the 20, I'm sorry, September the 5th, 2018. I think that parade starts about 6:00. Do they want to shut it down?
6:30.
You did what?
6:30.
6:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, under the request for the street closures for the Homecoming Parade to be held Wednesday, September 5th, 2018, for CHS.
I second it.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Is the parade for the 6:00 or 6:30?
It starts at 6:30.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Can I ask a quick question? Is it for all of them, as a group or just individually that we're voting on?
We're voting each one individually.
Okay. Thank you, yes. Aye, okay.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 600. The next is Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated Request for Street Closure, food truck rodeo to be held Friday, September 21st?
Yes.
Okay, 2018.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Downtown Christiansburg Inc. Request for Street Closures for the Food Truck Rodeo to be held Friday, September 21st, 2018.
I second it.
Motion in a second, discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
600, thank you. Next is the reappointment of Craig Moore to the Planning Commission for a four-year term beginning September the 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2022. Mr. Moore is out of town on vacation, and said he would come on the 11th if we needed him to come. I think we all know Craig.
Craig's been here enough.
He's been here enough, you will understand.
He's a great person too, on that committee, a great guy on the committee.
Do we have a motion?
You can't beat Craig, you really can't.
Motion in a second, comments?
You can't beat Craig, he's not a man to job.
Yeah.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
600. Staff reports, town manager?
Just want to, I guess, get approval from town council. Basically, right now, we have a limit on our special events grant application of $3,000, and we've had three special event applications that have recently exceeded those totals. One of those is approximately $6,500 for the food truck rodeo. And I think this is in part because of our change in operations of placing equipment at the ends of the streets for security reasons, keep people from driving into crowds. I think that's led to a little bit of increase in cost. But we were wondering if council is agreeable, could we increase the, basically the minimum amount of the special events grant application?
I would support that, and I was, I guess, Mike, you remember this, and Brad, you do too, when I was, I played a role in creating that events application, and this money isn't going to the organization.
No, it's not.
This is being, it's paying for all the services the town provides. The organization's running it, but for what the town has to do with the trash pickup and the...
Essentially, staff time and equipment time.
Yeah.
It's all coming back test, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Not going out in the form of cash, it's basically in kind.
It's basically overtime, I might as well say overtime for services.
It's been in place for, what, nine years?
Increasing it to 8,000.
It's been in place for nine years, so, yeah. So I would be your recommendation, and I'll support it. Is that what your recommendation is?
You need to have that big of a job for three days?
Well, like I say, the food truck rodeo this time is, I guess, estimated to be about 6,500, so.
Very well. And I think part of the thing is the way that they now use a lot of our big trucks to block opposite side streets and keep traffic. I don't know of any of our, any of our men that police, anybody that complains about doing that, I think they're all right there in the middle of everything and glad to do it, so. We have 8,000?
Yeah, that's where any recommended, I'd support that.
Okay.
And it just pays for the police officers who work there too, right?
It's everything.
Yes.
It's all free.
It's town staff time.
Parks and park.
And it's worth it.
Yes, it is.
We want people downtown. Okay, so 8,000, sounds good.
Up to.
Up to 8,000. Okay.
And we've been discussing the funding formula, the New River Valley Emergency Communications Regional Authority, the 911 Authority, at a meeting this afternoon. Joint Advisory Committee recommendation is to maintain the 25% payment, and the board is of the opinion, I believe, through discussion, to leave it at 25% for now, with the understanding that it may be reviewed at some point in the future, but that right now we'd leave it at 25%.
Absolutely, yes.
I want to make sure that you're agreeable with that.
Not only, yeah, for obvious reasons, but probably the most important ones, it gives us something planned on each year. But changing formula, you might be high one year and lower the next, and the data is suspicious, and this breaks down that. I like the idea. Thanks for the update, and I'm glad that's what it is.
And finally, I'd just like to point out that this will be Teresa Fontana's last council meeting with us. She'll be leading the county.
What a great one.
Attorney with Fairfax County.
Loudoun County.
You should get used to this. Are you going to be a municipal attorney up there?
A county attorney.
Get used to this, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a spell Loudoun County?
I do. I actually Googled it when I first did it, to make sure I was saying it right, because when I went for the interview, I wanted to make sure I pronounced it correctly.
What's also interesting about that too is that Ann Lewis, the Springs dad from helping us through a couple of interviews, she is now the Assistant County Administrator in Loudoun County.
How is she?
I think you've already looked up, looked each other up online.
Yeah, I have not met her yet, but...
Oh, she's, she's...
Just be aware, your real estate has gone off a little bit.
Yeah, a little. I'm in a one-bedroom apartment for quite a while.
It's been a great association.
Yeah.
And wonderful.
I just...
I know, you're getting closer to your son, and that's the main thing.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the important part.
We appreciate what she's done, she's a top-notch lady, and she always provides the best information for us, she does a great job, always.
Thank you. It's been my honor to serve as your town attorney, and my pleasure, and I've really enjoyed each and every one of you, and I love the citizens of Christiansburg. It's been crazy at times, but it's been great.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think, I think that Jim told me they have hired a gentleman that is the county attorney for Isle of Wight.
Yeah.
He's just going to come in, so he's going to have, he'll have judicial, or municipal experience, and Jim is going to fill in, he's going to take over until this guy gets on board and...
Yeah, he's going to be here September 4th.
Okay, so very good. September 4th, September, oh, he's going to, okay.
He starts September 4th.
Can you start up there the 4th?
I start there the 6th, but Friday's my last day at the 4th, so...
Very good. Well, not very good, but, you know. Thank you. Any other staff reports? Okay, very good. Council reports. Mr. Collins?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, just passed, sir, the community group had dialogue on rice picnic, and the police chief and his staff attended, so did Ann Joy like thank them for attending and showing support for town, because this picnic was more or less dealing towards issues that the police departments are seeing. And I was like, it would have been about a week or two back, they had the touch of truck event, and our fire department rescue members attended that. And we also had a groundbreaking for the fire department to do their burn building, and there were several town members that attended that, I can't name them because I'll forget someone.
Okay. Mr. Schalter?
Okay, the regional commission, which does a view in attendance, if you're not familiar with it, it's a commission of our region, you have either municipal leaders that are assigned, or citizen leaders, it's usually two, myself and Neil Johnson, Neil being our citizen member, he's on our planning commission, he was sitting right there, that's why I'm pointing there. But it was, this, we had a change in membership, of course, with the election in May, and of course, and we have a new chair, so Mike Harvey with Montgomery County, he's the new chair, I believe he sits on, he's the citizen representative, he sits on the planning commission. But some of the new members, we have Towne Pulaski, Mr. Clance, we have a Ms. Potter from Virginia Tech, Ms. Schumacher from RU, Raff University, University in, Joel Irving from Tech Lab in Blacksburg. One of the most significant new members is the Rafford Mayor, which we've all read about. So it's an exciting group that's getting ready to take over as your regional commission, and I would assume it's, the regional commission's very active under, under the chair Kevin Byrd, but I would assume under these, the turnover in membership with Mayor Horton, Schumacher, these are, these are some moving and shakers in the New River Valley, so be prepared for what you're going to see, some positive stuff coming out of the regional commission. What we basically, what Kevin did basically last week was just review some of the initiatives the, the commission has, has been part of. Trails was a big one. Trails was a big one. That was mentioned a lot throughout every commissioner, from Floyd to Pulaski, all the towns. Also Pembroke, the town of Pembroke is now a sitting member on the regional commission as well, so it's a new membership. But that really, when we went around per commissioner talking about, you know, what our town has contributed or what we're really looking to support Trails was the overwhelming initiative that each commissioner mentioned. And that, that really, that's something I truly believe in, in extending the Huckleberry Trail, but more importantly, you heard a lot about the connection between the Run Oak Valley and Christiansburg, which is the biggest gap. I think Chris Tuck had said something at the supervisor's meeting, and there was something in the paper, but this is something that is really going to be looked at and pushed forward at a regional level, but also at a, we talked about broadband, some of the, I know we've heard about it the past few years, but the regional commission always plays a vital role in that, bringing broadband into our area. One thing interesting, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but what happened is we always get, like, the Chamber of Commerce to show up, hey, you guys got to provide free internet service, some more broadband in the area. Well, there is broadband which connects all the municipality and the government buildings, which goes, I believe, it went from Pulaski to Bonnettock County. That was the initiative that Citizen did a few years ago. But one of the hurdles they run into is funding. There's no money to do that. There's, you know, you heard the marches mention that, like, grants. Well, there's not enough money in grants, and as a municipality, I don't think we could afford to even put it in there. But there are new initiatives coming open. Kevin mentioned the power application that's getting ready to be submitted to see if they can do some more, more affordable laid wire or wireless initiative. Wireless initiative, what you want to hear more than laid wire here in the near future. We also talked about the NRV rail, the Run Oak Ridership, which is what the state's looking at, whether they're going to run the rail up here, and Randy's been an active member there, so have you, Mike. But the ridership to Run Oak has actually surpassed what they expected this year. They were expecting 40-some thousand, and it's going to be 50-some thousand, so that's, that's good for our area. And Christiansburg, of course, is going to be the New River Valley hub, which still, to me, I'm very proud of that. Still brings some gasp to our other members who wanted it in their community, but I'm glad to see it's still going to be in Christiansburg. And really, one of the biggest initiatives, I'm sure Randy might go about, but the design and cost phase is coming for our new rail station. So that's, so everybody knows the cost, and of course, it's going to be a regional initiative, where it's just not Christiansburg flipping the bill, it's the whole reason it's going to put in for this. So that's, that's good. We're going to get some sort of cost associated with this new rail station soon. And let me just make sure I didn't miss anything. I do miss Harry. I want to say Harry is kind of lonely on that regional commission. Harry and I used to ride together. So that was a lonely drive for me out there this time.
And I miss you, too, buddy.
And Harry, they miss you out there, so, you know, remember, there's, you know, it's one of the last Thursdays of the month, you're welcome to drive over, I'll pick you up and take you over. But if you ever get a chance to come out to the regional commission, it's, and what Kevin and his team does, and the new commissioners, which, it's not to say that the most recent commissioners you just left weren't doing a great job, they did a great job as well. But it's really interesting to see what other communities right next to us are doing and how we support each other as a region. That's it for me.
Thank you. I'm glad you slapped me on the shoulder.
I wanted to wake you up.
Mr. Stipes?
One brief note came straight to this meeting from VDOT's public hearing on the 81 corridor, and there's significant interest. VDOT knows the needs, and I'm not going to get into details, but the parts of the state that are achieving meaningful transportation improvements, the biggest problem with 81 is course reliability. It's not congestion, it's reliability from traffic accidents. But just to plant a couple bugs in your ear, one thing that's, that's going to be beat around is localized regional, regional taxes that would affect not just our region, but also the, you know, the majority of users that are going up and down the interstate. And we're talking about localized fuel taxes and some other things like this. Just ideas if we're going to achieve anything meaningful on 81. The second is, and that's not, there'll be more on that, but there has to be some new funding if anything reasonable is going to be done to accomplish. You can talk about it and have a plan, but unless there's money to go behind it. So that's going to be some interesting discussions coming up about that. Ms. Fontana, I did not think it could get any better than Elizabeth Dillon. She was fantastic, and I didn't think anyone would ever rise to that. Of course, she left this council to become a federal judge, and she was fantastic in my 12 years as of September 1st, I've been on council. You and Elizabeth, we happen to hire a firm, but we don't really hire a firm, so whoever's in your back, whoever's in your wake, got to be good, because you've been fantastic, and we've been fortunate to have you, and you actually do feel like a part of our staff. So having been on council for a while, the last person that rose to that was Elizabeth Dillon, and I didn't think we could, I didn't think that would ever be matched again, and you've done that.
Thank you so much.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hubbard?
Let me ask a couple questions. Brad, I had heard that there has been some talk about doing tolls on trucks on 81. Was there any talk with that?
It's, it's a blank palette now, but VDOT is painting the picture that they don't, VDOT doesn't make any decisions about this. It's a legislature. I'm just, I just, I don't want to get into a long debate. I just want to tell you...
But that wasn't covered, really?
No. Things were covered. Nothing meaningful came out of that, except for if we want the future to be different than the present, something has to change. And it has to do with funding, it has to do with equitable funding. It has to do with equitable funding. We don't want our citizens to bear an unfair burden, but if there are certain mechanisms to raise money to, for improvements in our area, that's what Northern Virginia is doing, and that's what Toddwater's doing, to build a $3 billion tunnel. They're not getting, that money's not coming from VDOT, it's coming from the localities in that area. And we're talking about PDCs is what we're, the regional commissions. So the regional commissions that this would affect is 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, right up 81 corridor. So if the legislature, if there's press, if there's pressure from our citizens that they want something better for their interstate, and then there's pressure exhibited, or whatever, put on our state legislators, and they provide that, those opportunities, then that's what it will be talking about. It's not just our, it'll be the 81 corridor. It won't be, it'll go all the way up to Winchester, and it would have to be a coalition of legislators to put the pressure on legislature to allow us to do something different along the corridor. But one fact that resonates very clearly to me is that 30% of the road miles that's put on our interstates, 30% of the road miles that's put on our entire transportation system is out of state tax, and every other state has caught on with that. And it's a, you know, but anyway, but to answer your question, nothing would be done just from Montgomery County or Christiansburg or even the fourth planning district. It would have to be the whole 81 corridor. But that is how, that is how dirt is staying, that is how transportation improvements are being delivered in Northern Virginia and Toddwater area. It's, it's local initiatives like that. Okay.
Thanks. Well, I have a question for you, too. I mean, so on this rail, Blacksburg is going to pay a portion, Montgomery County will pay a portion?
All the members of the...
Everybody, everybody will pay a little bit.
Everybody will pay a lot, I think. And that's, that's, you know, that'll come out in a few months.
How much, how much people are going to pay?
That's the initial study, and then you're going to have to break it down, I'm sure. It's like the regional commission, not each member pays the same amount, we all pay different based on population, so it's all up in their seat, sort of like the...
A committee that's looking at cost of the station and things like that, what size station do you build to begin with? Ownership of it, is it an authority, is it owned by one of the localities, is it owned jointly by localities, and that's something we're trying to work through.
This is something each community, or at least municipal councilperson or supervisor that sits on the regional commission, they, everybody's paying attention to what it's going to cost.
Well, my thing is not as exciting as theirs, but in a way it is. The, this past weekend, the Montgomery Museum had their Heritage Day, and Sue Farrar asked me, who is the director, to say a few words tonight concerning how pleased she was. This past one was, was, she feels the best Heritage Day that the museum has ever had, and, and she feels really that members of the town really helped out, like Casey was in charge of the pie eating contest, he was one of the ones.
The one and done.
He looked like he put a little weight on.
There's not a lot of repeat judges on those things. Each morning, and that's it.
And, and the mayor was the master of ceremonies for the whole day and did a great job, and I think just about all, and, and Brad, he came out of the scene a little bit richer than he was when he started down, so it was just a very successful day, and she just wanted to say how much she appreciated everybody coming and supporting that, and, and she worked a little hard on it, really. Okay? That's all I have.
Marissa?
Mine is really under other business, but I can throw it in now if you'd like.
Well, no, you don't have any type of council report?
Correct.
Okay. I will say that I echo what Randy and all the council members have said. Teresa, I will miss you. You're the only attorney we ever had that laughs at my jokes, so I will miss you. But it's an inside joke, yes. Anyway, I wanted to say that there was an opening on the, the Transportation Committee and, or Commission, and Ray Smoot has been appointed to take Corporal Harrison's place,